Good evening, everyone. We are on the air and it is seven o'clock, so I will call our meeting to order. I will call our regular city council meeting of November ninth, 2021, being held in the Richfield Municipal Center to order. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone can please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. The next item is the Open Forum, and I will pass it to Executive Assistant Wynn to let people know how they can participate in the Open Forum.
Thank you, Mayor. We always encourage residents to attend our meetings in person and state their comments for council. If you are unable to attend in person, you are more than welcome to attend via phone. You can dial six one two eight six one zero six five one and state your comments to council. You can also have your comments read by a staff person, and you could submit them before the meeting to myself at kwymn@richfieldmn.gov. You can also call and leave a message at six one two eight six one nine seven one one. Again, if you would like to call in and have your comments stated live during the meeting, dial six one two eight six one zero six five one. I currently do not have anybody on the line.
Thank you. Is anyone here in person to participate in the Open Forum? Looks like we have nobody here in person to participate in the Open Forum. Just as a reminder to folks, the Open Forum is an option available to any residents, anyone who would like to come to our city council meeting and address the city council. You have up to three minutes, and you can address any issue you'd like that does not have a public hearing on our council agenda. It's not a discussion opportunity, but it is to just share your thoughts and opinions. And then the city manager does respond the following council meeting with any specific asks or requests that were made during the Open Forum. So just to let people know what the Open Forum is about and how to participate. So I'll ask one more time before I close the Open Forum. Executive Assistant Wynn, do we have anyone here on the line to participate?
Mayor, I do not have anybody on the phone.
Okay, seeing as we don't have anyone on the phone and we don't have anyone in person, I will close the Open Forum and I will move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the Special City Council Work Session of October twentieth, 2021, the Concurrent Council Planning Commission Work Session of October twenty-sixth, 2021, and the City Council Meeting of October twenty-sixth, 2021.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The minutes have been approved. The next item on our agenda is, we do have two presentations, annual presentations. The first one is the annual presentation or the annual report of the Planning Commission with Chair Catherine Quam. Hello, Commissioner Quam, Chair Quam. You can come up to the microphone and give your presentation. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Thank you for this opportunity and for your time, council and staff. This was a lot easier last year when I got to do it from my bedroom in front of the computer. So I'm going to try not to read this time because I think it's a little dull, but I will give a brief review of this or last year's highlights. Since most of them came before you after the Planning Commission recommends to the city council, except for a couple stray items, I won't go through a list or anything, but I'll just highlight a couple that I thought were especially good. In March, I thought we had one of our more productive meetings. We listened to the proposal for the, I think the name changed, but for the Link sixty-five or is it Enclave now? Okay. And the development team and commissioners had an especially interactive back and forth. I felt like the development team really heard us, and there was a lot of input from the commissioners. It was, you know, just a productive debate. They addressed stormwater, green space, parking. I particularly thought it was a good design with their massing the five-story building toward Lyndale and Sixty-Fifth. I think that's really creative use and effective use of that space. Nobody got everything they wanted, but we all came to a good conclusion. Another one that I thought was particularly positive was when we considered modifying rules related to home occupations, and what came up was the CSAs or community-supported agriculture where homegrown produce or vegetables. So that came up as in the process somehow. And during the time, like myself, during the time, I changed my mind about it just by listening, and I felt like people were listening to each other, which is one of my goals for the commission. And we came out with adding, someone added, Commissioner Sturso, I believe, added the amendment to include an allowance for CSA distribution at residential sites with the condition that it's only things that are grown there that they can then sell, so thereby limiting the scale of it. So that was a really, that was a good outcome after some stress, some Facebook stress and stuff. So those are two of the times I thought we were very effective as a commission. We heard, you know, variances like one for air conditioners at the condominiums by Woodlake, so you didn't hear that one. That wasn't too difficult. And then I will change gears a bit, and one thing I admire about our commission is that I really feel like everyone there is trying, trying their hardest and is like there for the right reasons, and that's exciting. We take the responsibility seriously. You will soon appoint two new commissioners, one for the commissioner we lost this summer, who left this summer, and then one for a commissioner who is in her ninth year. So it seems like a good time to maybe request some kind of training for the commission on how best to work with the tools we have, what's at our disposal, how best to work with staff, how to debate constructively, that sort of thing, because I really think that needs to be encouraged. And then also, I think our commission would greatly benefit, I know you all agree, with diversity, and that doesn't, that can mean a lot of things, mainly that could be age diversity, because that's different life, you know, viewpoints, or it could be cultural diversity with the goal being just ideological diversity. So we can come together like this, we can hash it out and come with a better recommendation to you. So I just want to throw those two things out there that I see as what would be valuable new commissioners. And I appreciate all the support I've received, especially from some of you, but all of you have been very supportive of me and my role, and that helps a lot because it's not always easy, but it helps to know that you have some support out there. And I welcome any feedback or questions now or in the future.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Quam, Chair Quam, for that report on the Planning Commission. Questions, comments from council members? Councilmember Supple?
I wanted to thank the commission and also thank you specifically for your leadership because I really do appreciate that, and you guys have a lot of complex issues that come before you, and you guys have done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Troutman and then Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Commissioner Quam, I just wanted to thank you again publicly like I have privately. Your leadership speaks for itself, but you serve on a commission. We have commissions that tend to have harder decisions put on their shoulders and others that have, that take less, you know, passion from the public, and so you've just always worked really hard to lift up voices, and I just appreciate the call for a diversity of voices on the commission. We'll certainly share those goals, and so I just wanted to say thank you and great work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You are really a terrific chair, Catherine. I was Planning Commission Chair for a year and a half, and, you know, reflecting on our interactions on the Planning Commission, and I often disagreed with you on what good development looks like, or I think we have totally different styles, but honestly, your style is probably better as a chair because you do a really good job at making sure everybody is heard about representing the group's impact, and when you have an idea that isn't well accepted, you do a really great job on accepting the, you know, determination of the group. So you're such a terrific leader. You're a really steady hand at the Planning Commission, and we're lucky to have you.
And I will just add huge thanks and gratitude to you, Commissioner Chair Quam. I would say you're an exceptional leader, period, and you're a great chair, and I would say out of all of our boards and commissions, probably the one that is the toughest and most contentious consistently is probably our, is not probably, is our Planning Commission. You see in before you, you know, developments in our city, I've said this before, but in Richfield, we don't have development separate, commercial development separate from our residential, and we were fully built out in the sixties. So commercial coexists in our neighborhoods, and that is obviously very hard for our community, but it's also what makes our community great and a great place to live. And so you see a lot of the residents, for many residents, maybe their first connection to the city outside of our parks or maybe some services is coming to City Hall at a Planning Commission meeting, and oftentimes it's because there's something in their backyard that is going to impact them. And so you're really dealing with immediate impacts from our neighbors and our residents to thinking about the planning in the future of development for the next thirty to sixty years. And so that's a lot to hold and to provide a space that's welcoming and inclusive and supportive for those residents, and also welcoming, inclusive, and supportive to debate the issues and make better decisions for the commissioners. And then you layer on top of, the scope of the Planning Commission is also very restricted and limited to confirming that, you know, something is within the scope of our zoning and ordinances and codes or not versus some of the things that the city council gets to weigh in on with those developments. So you have a very tough job, and you lead very gracefully, consistently, and you do it well, and I just greatly appreciate your leadership. And then the last thing I'll say is, thank you for bringing up the fact that we do have two openings, and this is, you know, just want to do a plug to our residents. If you are interested in the future of our community, the Planning Commission is a great place to participate in that leadership and have really active engagement in what that looks like, and we are looking for commissioners that can bring diversity to the role. So thank you for bringing that up, and hopefully we have residents that are super excited to fill those roles. And I want to make sure that as we do have two new commissioners coming on, that we are doing everything we can to make sure that you feel supported as a chair, but that the rest of your commissioners and the whole Planning Commission feels like you have what you need, the resources, the support, the education, whatever it is, the connection to staff that you need to move forward. So thank you for your work, Chair Quam.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks all of you, and thank you for all of your leadership, too.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Our next and final presentation is with Kevin Went from the Community Services Commission. Welcome, Kevin.
For the most part. Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff, hi, thanks for having me. I'm Kevin Went. I'm the current Chair of the Community Services Commission, and I'm happy to give the commission's annual report. Despite the onset of the pandemic and kind of contrary to my own expectations, recreation and the commission have been very busy. Not only does the requirement of isolation bring our residents out to our open spaces out in the field, but they've also brought them back into our indoor spaces now finally, too. I'll speak to just a couple of the highlights and accomplishments of the commission over the past year. One of the bigger ones is the brand-new universally-inclusive playground area at Augsburg Park. That opened up this summer. It was the result of several years of input and work by various city staff, especially Director Markle, to get that to happen. Members of the commission sat on advisory task forces, helped with vendor bids, and helped reach out to potential sponsors and donors. The grand opening was a great success, included a kid's DJ and ice cream and the mayor reading a bedtime story for the kids. The $750,000 project was funded through a variety of sources, none of which added to the city's tax levy. The largest contributors were Hennepin County at $300,000 and then the Minnesota DNR at $200,000, but residents also dug deep and contributed through the Roundup Program at the Richfield Liquor Stores, contributing almost over $20,000 to the project in 2019. The playground includes playground features like rubber surfacing, accessible swings, and accessible zip line, a ten-person accessible whirlaround, play structure ramps that allow all users to get seventy-two inches off the ground, ground-level musical instruments, and a multi-user team swing. And if you haven't been there yet, you should. It is constantly busy and for good reason. It's a really cool place to be. In addition, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of a council resolution discharging racially discriminatory covenants on Richfield properties as part of the Justice Bees Coalition, after receiving a very enlightening and informative presentation on the history and the state of these covenants around the country, around Minnesota, and right here at home. The Wood Lake Nature Center also falls under the purview of the commission. In that capacity, the commission appointed new and returning members of the Friends of Woodlake or Fowl Board and received regular updates on the planning phase of proposed new building at Wood Lake Nature Center and the preparations for the center's fiftieth birthday celebration, the free event that included entertainment, nature hikes, historical displays, and a wall of memories. We also prioritized proposed capital projects and recommended council approval of the 2022 Parks Recreation and Open Space Capital Improvement Budget, provided guidance and feedback to staff regarding the Roundup for Richfield Parks Program at Richfield Liquor Stores, which recently proceeds from the program will go towards ski and snowshoe equipment and all-terrain wheelchairs for Wood Lake Nature Center, as well as the installation of a butterfly garden at Augsburg Park. We also advised staff on the replacement of play equipment at Fremont and Christian Parks this year, helped score proposals and select a vendor, received regular updates about the COVID-related adaptations made to recreation programs and events, as well as transition back to in-person events, and provided feedback to a representative from the University of Minnesota regarding a park program fee waiver and family outreach initiative being launched by the U of M in cooperation with local recreation departments like ours. We also appointed a volunteer from the commission to serve on the committee to help advise MINDOT on placemaking efforts related to the reconstruction of 494 and provided support and ideas for the Richfield Veep Food Drive, an effort that's being led by our commission vice chair Heather McDonough. The CSC appointed liaisons and therefore received reports from those liaisons from the Planning Commission, the Arts Commission, the Friendship City Commission, the Friends of Woodlake Board, Transportation Commission, Sustainability Commission, and the Honoring All Veterans Memorial Group. We also receive regular reports from staff from recreation, the community center, Wood Lake Nature Center, the pool, arena, mini-golf, parks maintenance, and sustainability. And in the coming year, we're going to again prioritize capital improvement items like the playgrounds and the other green spaces, contribute, continue to hear regular reports from the staff, and provide feedback and guidance on approved capital projects. And this year, that's going to include a replacement of play equipment at Sheridan and Monroe Parks and resurfacing the tennis court at Fairwood. Thank you very much for your time and attention on behalf of answering any questions.
Thank you so much, Chair Went, for the update, the annual report on the Community Services Commission. Any questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just share that it's been an honor to be the liaison to the Community Services Commission. This year is my first year in that role, and it's just a reminder, especially as you list off the accomplishments of this year, that I know, I know we rightfully recognized our recreation services staff for a few awards recently and the wonderful work that they do, and just that your commission is not the only resident input, but is certainly often the first and definitely the most consistent input that our recreation staff get to make sure that all of our programs and our amenities are connected to what the community is looking for and needs, and that it shows that we have, like, everything you listed is great, and that it's because we have such dedicated residents helping to make it as good as it can be. And so thank you for your leadership. Thanks the full commission, if they're listening in, for all of those efforts and making the work that we do as a city a true partnership between our staff and our residents, that is really powerful and how we end up with such great results. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Other comments, questions, concerns, comments? Commissioner, Councilmember Supple?
Thank you. I just wanted to also highlight what a great job you do of reaching out to the community for input. Like, an example would be for the Augsburg Park, because of concerns that were brought up, the fencing that went around it so that it would be safer for kids with special needs. And I think that that's really important because it makes the projects better. So thank you for always reaching out and asking for input from the community.
Thank you, Councilmembers Supple. Other comments from council members? Go ahead, Councilmember Troutman.
I just want to, in addition to thanking you for the quality of the work you're doing, just recognize the volume of all the projects. There's just a lot that your commission has accomplished this year, and sometimes you work for a lot of years and then you get to experience the fruit of that. So I know a lot of these are multi-year efforts, but congratulations, and please keep up the good work.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I don't have much to say, but I do appreciate the work you're doing, and particularly the Augsburg Park. I'm not a parent, so I don't have a lot of reason to interact with playgrounds, but a lot of parents, including from other communities, including from Minneapolis, tell me how great and exciting that park is. So it comes high praise from kids who must be experts on if it's good or not. It looks beautiful.
And I just want to thank you for your leadership as well, Chair Went, for everything that you've done with the commission, and especially during the last two years when, you know, our community really needed that sense of community and that place for mental health and well-being and connection. It was with a lot of the work that you and your commission helped lead in pivoting, adapting to figure out how do we use our parks and our recreation services in the midst of COVID when people are struggling the most to keep that sense of community and connection? And then how do we keep growing it and expanding it, and what does that look like? So that's with things like the dog park and the inclusive playground. So thank you for your leadership, and especially during the past two years where our community really needed it most.
Thank you. I'll relay those comments and thank you for your support.
Thank you for the report. All right, we are done with our presentations. The next item is the approval of the agenda.
I would move the approval of the agenda.
Hayford O'Leary, second.
Thank you. The approval of the agenda, the motion has been made to approve the agenda and seconded. Any comments or questions on the approval of the agenda? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda has been approved. The next item is the Consent Calendar with City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The Consent Calendar contains several separate items which are acted on by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. Only two items on tonight's consent calendar. Item A, consider approval for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Blessed Trinity Catholic School located at St. Richards Catholic Church, 7540, 10 Avenue South, for their grand gala taking place December eleventh, 2021. And item B, first reading of a proposed ordinance amending rules related to bicycle parking. And I submit both of these items for your consideration as part of the consent.
Thank you.
I would like to move approval of the Consent Calendar.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the Consent Calendar. Any comments or questions on the Consent Calendar? Councilmember Troutman and then Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
As an alum of that August elementary school in my ward, I just want to wish them every success with their gala event.
Thank you.
Just to say, I'll talk more about it at our next meeting, but I'm very excited about our bicycle parking ordinance. It's a really leap forward and an opportunity to go from being kind of at the middle of the pack to really leading on this. I did have one outstanding question, which unfortunately I got pretty late to staff, but I'm sure I will have an answer before the next meeting, which was just about what defines a bicycle parking space, but really excited about the direction of it. They did an excellent job on this.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was just going to echo the excitement about the bicycle parking changes, and then just in general, I think it is a major leap forward. I think there's several specific pieces of it that, both from the work session and from the Planning Commission and just from ideas that staff brought forward from their research, I think there's several specific pieces in it that are really helpful and more specific and will be beneficial. I was, the one concern I had that I had talked with staff about, I am excited, too, that there is some flexibility if there are specific cases where the rules seem like they may not be appropriate, that there is the possibility for exception, that some of the community spaces, I don't, I mean, this would apply to new buildings, and so I don't know that we will have gigantic community spaces, other than hopefully the Wood Lake Nature Center with some state bonding, which I think would be a very appropriate place to have quite a lot of bicycle parking. But some, anyway, there seemed like there could be some hypotheticals that would be different, and so I appreciate the flexibility as well.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The consent calendar passes. The next item is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give you a brief update on organized calling. We, you know, it is, we're rolling out, we're actually getting some really positive feedback now, but we continue to field a lot of phone calls, and unlike before when we had six people trying to keep up with the emails and the phone calls, it's just Rachel now, so, or Sustainability Specialist Lindholm. And she, like, one day recently, she's had to return forty-five phone calls. So it's still, we're still working it out, but it is getting smoother, and like I said, we have some really nice feedback recently, so great. I appreciate when residents send thank you. And then I wanted to give a COVID update. Statewide Minnesota remains in the high-risk categories for the test positivity rate and the case growth per 100,000 residents and hospitalizations. Reinfections are surging as well. Historically, those over sixty-five have been at greatest risk for the death of COVID. However, we're seeing a large number of deaths in the younger population during the latest wave. The good news is that five-to-eleven-year-olds are now able to receive vaccinations. We're working on getting city-level data for vaccination rates for this population. Case rates in Richfield are continuing to rise with an additional 210 cases reported in the last two weeks. Richfield stands at 4,891 cases and forty-nine deaths. Almost 100 cases in Richfield are reinfections. We need to remain vigilant with masks, hand washing, and most importantly, staying home when sick, and staff continue to plan for the federal vaccine. And Public Health Administrator Jennifer Anderson is here tonight, if you have further questions.
Thank you. Questions on the City Manager's Report from council? Thank you. Questions on the city manager's report from council? No. Thank you so much, City Manager Rodriguez, for the report. The next item is claims and payroll. Someone like to move?
I would move claims and payroll. Second.
Thank you. The motion um, has been made to move claims and payroll and seconded. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Claims and payroll has been approved. The last item is hats off to hometown hits. I will start with Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just have a couple, a couple hits from uh, from Wood, from Woodlake. And um, one is our, our book club. If folks don't know that we have a book club at Woodlake, that's a great option. And we have our last full moon hikes coming up uh, this uh, Friday, November nineteenth. So it's, the, the park is beautiful and wonderful to be engaged and immersed in throughout the year. But um, it's also in, one of the, my favorite experiences in nature took place walking in Woodlake uh, at night. Yeah, and uh, so I would just encourage folks not to, to, to miss that opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Um, I just wanted to mention, we do have one more council meeting before it, but that the orange line is apparently still on track to open December fourth. I know they had some concerns with one of the stations being damaged in a crash, but as far as I know, it's all still happening. It is a big deal for Richfield. It'll, will be all day, at least every fifteen-minute service from here down to Burnsville and to downtown Minneapolis. Um, big deal. It should be like a fifteen-minute ride most of the day, which is like incredibly fast to cover that amount of distance by transit. So I'm thrilled and I will be riding it on day one.
Thank you. Councilmember Supple?
Thank you. Um, first of all, I wanted to thank City Clerk Carrie Sinning and the elections judges and everybody for um, all the work they did on election day. It's very much appreciated. Um, I also wanted to thank the city staff for answering questions about organized hauling. I was able to use the email, the garbageandrecycling@richfieldmin.gov to get a composting question answered. So take advantage of that. It's garbageandrecycling@richfieldmin.gov. Um, again, I'm going to keep bringing this up because I think it's so important, um, commissions, openings. You can make applications during the whole month of December. We have openings for both youth and adult commissioners and there's openings on all the commissions, so please sign up for that. And finally, um, we have Veterans Day on Thursday and the Honoring All Veterans Memorial Group is having a service at five P M. And the public is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was going to echo the, the many thanks to city staff who worked on the election and the election judges, as well as um, congratulations to our new school board members um, and returning. Um, and then wanted to um, actually also lift up the um, staff again for, for the hauling process that had a, a few questions of my own. Um, and uh, staff are very helpful. And then the, um, the last thing just wanted to share, uh, we had a um, more of a team-building and sort of uh, internal-focused uh, retreat with council and staff this past weekend, but that is in preparation for the strategic planning process coming up um, right away in twenty twenty-two. And so we'd just encourage residents, um, if you have uh, big ideas, things you want to see happen in town, whether that is a, a shift or something completely new, uh, please reach out to council um, in the, the coming couple months that this is a great time to be able to, to consider that.
Thank you, Councilmember Whalen. Um, and the big item that I wanted to share was already shared by Councilmember Supple in joining our Veterans Day event, a huge hats off to all of our veterans in Richfield um, and for the tremendous service that they have provided throughout the generations. Um, and that will be at our uh, Veterans Memorial on Thursday at five, like Councilmember Supple said. And I will add just one more. We do have Richfield's second annual community-wide winter food drive with Veep. Um, and so it will be running through December first through the fifteenth. And you can find more information online, whether it's on the Richfield um, Facebook page uh, or on, on our website or at Veep's website. Um, and this is just, again, we are still in a pandemic and it is um, impacting all of our families and food insecurity has spiked since, since COVID. So please um, think about whatever you can do to spread the word and help um, contribute to Veep's food drive for this winter. Um, we are looking to exceed the goal, which is five thousand pounds of food and personal items um, this year. So please go on social media, go to Veep, visit Veep or to our City of Richfield's website um, to learn more about the winter food drive that will happen the first half of December. All right, thank you, everyone. Seeing as we have no more business, I will adjourn our meeting. Thanks. Good night.